We're going to call the May 8th. May 8th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority to order. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by our Transportation Program Specialist, Kristo Orde. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding an item of initiation of litigation. Two items of initiation of litigation. Directions provided on, I can't read Jeff's handwriting. Oh, does file versus, not file versus the Department of Finance?
Direction was provided to file, to initiate litigation against the Department of Finance concerning the Delta Lane contract.
All right, that is what you wrote. All right, thank you. And also to confer with our counsel regarding existing litigation against the Department of Finance in Yolo County, and no action was taken. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking action or taking up discussion on items brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, please fill out a yellow card that is available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item, so if you're here to speak on an item that's later on our agenda, we take the card, which suggests you turning the card in as soon as you can, but definitely before the council questions and the public comments begin, because we don't take the cards after the staff presentation. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any demonstrations, or boos, or applause, or cat calls, or anything else, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we've got no requests to speak under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or the communications this evening? Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, two, Mr. Mayor. LAFCO met last Thursday, and the major issue there, matter of fact, really, the only real issue there was we supported the annexation into the Davis Cemetery District. That's east Yolo, Clarksburg, and the city of West Sacramento. In the past, West Sacramento has not been annexed into that, and so anyway, this just opens up a different alternative for people that if they want to be buried in the Davis Cemetery District, they can. And the other issue was the Regional Financing Authority met a week ago, and I am very glad to report that the lockbox is full, and all bonds will be paid. And this is for the River Cats Stadium, Rayleigh Field, and as I think most of you remember, we floated bonds, and we have a financing authority that makes sure that the River Cats are making their payments into this lockbox, and then the lockbox is used to pay off the bonds. And it's been very successful for 10, 11, 12 years, whatever. We've had the stadium now, and so it seems to be working very well. Thank you.
And also that Mr. Kristof was elected to, I think, an unprecedented 20th term or something, as President of the Stadium Financing Authority. All right, any other reports or communications? Mr. Villegas?
Yeah, just a couple real quick, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the, let's see, earlier today, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met, and so I think it's been pretty well documented in the papers, there's been a partial settlement, if you've been following at all. You know, the suit that we had regarding our discharge permit to the Central Valley Water Board was appealed to the State Board, so our suit ended up there, and we now have a partial settlement. And essentially, what that settlement does is, the agreement is, in part, is to, we agree to drop the portion relative to ammonia and the nitrates from the filtration, and as a result, we get additional time to comply with the key component of it, which is the ammonia removal. So what that does, because it stretches out the amount of time, it reduces the cost because the current timeframe with which we had to comply and had the thing constructed, as you know, it's well over a billion, could end up being a billion and a half by the time it's said and done over the next 10 years. The idea of being able to have more time to do the construction will reduce the likelihood of the amendments and all the changes that occur, the change orders that occur when you're trying to construct a large project like that under a very compressed timeframe. So there are some good, there's some good that's going to come out of it. Certainly, having more time is going to reduce the cost, and that's the cost that's going to be eventually absorbed by the ratepayers. So staff is actually proposing, are actually going to come up with some ideas about just exactly what that will mean in terms to the ratepayers, which is very good news. And so at the next meeting, oh, and by the way, it's now called the Echo Project, rather than calling it the Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project, it's now called the Echo Project.
Is that because you get echoes out of?
There's a lot of reasons. Yeah, that could be one, but the other reason, I think, in terms, that was articulated to us, was that the whole idea of echo water is being recycled, and the idea that water comes through, comes back in, and in some respects, it's going to be cleaner coming out of that system than it is going into it. So I'm not trying to sell it, I'm just trying to tell you what it is.
Try a little harder on this one.
I'm not. You know, there are people much smarter than I that came up with that idea, so I'm not going to knock it. And then in May, we're going to get presented with some treatment options, so, and the budget actually looks very good. I mean, I think in terms of trying to manage this huge change, it's a big deal, it's very expensive, but so far, things are going really well. Let's see, Wednesday, the 24th of April, the county-city two-by-two met, and we received two things, an update on the county's, as you know, AB 109, the county's realignment plan, we received an update on that. Things seem to be going pretty well. The numbers that we were presented are consistent with what we anticipated, the numbers of the post-release community service folks would be for our community, and so that seems to be moving pretty well. And we also received an update, as you also may recall, I don't know if it's been in the news or not, but there, John Guaramendi is making recommendations about how to resolve the state's peripheral canal proposals, and as it pertains to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, the latest version, and using West Sacramento as a way to resolve some of those needs to send water south. And so rather than sticking to the initial proposals, which are a little bit further south than our city, his suggestion is that we use the existing deepwater channel as one of the inlets, and I think we probably want to have some say in that proposal. So the city manager's office is working with the county on drafting some response to that. Is that, is that correct? Okay. That's it? Thank you.
No. We're having a presentation, Item 2, that'll cover the JPA, the Yolo Habitat JPA, so we'll wait for that. All right, the Delta Protection Commission, we haven't had a meeting in a month, but I wanted the council to know that our executive director is, has announced his resignation. So we're going to be launching a search process for a new executive director at the commission. Mike Machado has been our executive director for two years, I think, maybe a little less. So he's moving on, and we'll be looking for new leadership at that commission. It's important, the commission has an important role to play with respect to land use in the delta, including the city, as a result of all the legislation that was passed during the big water package a couple of years ago, and then a very, a very central role in the issues that Mr. Villegas just raised around the various facilities in the delta for the movement of water for the south and for habitat and for other purposes. So we want to definitely be engaged in that. Are you planning on bringing an item up on the quote-unquote Guaramendi?
Mr. Mayor, we were hoping to bring that to the Port Commission next Wednesday. Staff needs additional time, but the idea is to bring that back in June.
Okay. To both, or?
To both.
Okay.
Council and to the port.
All right. Well, as long as we're coordinating with our partners, make sure that we're staying on track in terms of having the right influence, because the potential impact of what Congressman Guaramendi has suggested is enormous to our community. Essentially, piping most of, or a large chunk of, all the water from California through the deepwater channel would have massive impacts on the deepwater channel along, around whether we could continue to be a viable shipping channel or not, around recreation in that channel, around land use on both sides, both banks of the channel, all the way through. I mean, it's just, and that's just, I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg, so we definitely want to get it, make sure that we're fully ahead of that topic. And so we're all, we're all involved in various other external agencies and commissions and boards, whether it's WRA, or the Regional Water Authority, or the Sewer District, or the Delta Commission, but we should make sure that we're all, we're all understanding what the specific impacts would be from doing this. And then the Sacramento Council of Governments, the Transportation Committee met earlier this month, and we're forwarding some stuff to the full board, but a couple of the key items, I'm not going to talk about the Bike Master Plan, which is moving forward, because I'll give the council an update on the regional Bike Master Plan work when we get to our Bike Master Planner later this evening. But the, all the committees of CACOG have heard this month, a very extensive, and I know it's been taped, so it'll actually be, you know, if we hadn't all been here during this whole process, but a very, very extensive and excellent presentation by Mr. McKeever on sort of the history of the blueprint and the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. Why are you waving at me? Oh, it's on, okay, this means it's online in Star Trek. So it's online, but it's a, it's a really outstanding sort of review of the history, but also why it's so critical from our ability to grow and develop in the region, and particularly in communities like ours, as we continue to try to deal with, I think it's fair to say, the assault by region builders and a couple of others that are trying to undermine the basic foundation of what we agreed to do in the region, what we are doing in the region, and that's provided huge benefits on flood protection, on SEQA, on all sorts of other regulatory issues, in addition to, you know, 10 years of peace between the building, housing, chamber, social justice, and environmental communities in our region, which has allowed for everyone to work together to try to, to build in ways that make sense for the whole region. So it was an excellent presentation, it's worth seeing, but it's, we're moving towards action in June and July on any potential follow-ups around policies that govern how CACOG gets engaged in assuring the integrity of the Sustainable Community Strategy. And then lastly, the committee's forwarded a set of the policies and criteria for the various funding, the discretionary funding programs that CACOG operates, including the bike and pedestrian program, but also the community design program, community design being the source that we won for the, for the West Capital Streetscape Project and others, and we've done quite well on that program. But that program, that round will be released in the fall, and so the committee's been working on the criteria for those, for those programs, including the bike, the bike one, which we'll talk about later. All right, we have no appointments to boards or commissions tonight, so that brings us to Item 2, which is a presentation and discussion on the Yolo County Habitat Joint Powers Agency status and additional funding recommendation. That's Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're here before you with three objectives. One is to provide an update on the status of the JPA and the drafting of the Habitat Plan, and Ms. Petra Marshon, the Executive Director to the Natural Heritage Program, is here to provide that update. And then also, we're seeking any direction you may have with the progress of the JPA and the plan. And then also, we're asking for authorization for the city manager to provide additional funding, up to $39,164, for non-reimbursable costs. So those are costs that are not covered by grants, that would carry over into the fiscal year 13, 14. The $39,000 would be West Sacramento's share, and that would be if it was fully staffed and we're moving forward with the plan. In Attachment 2, it contains, there's two other options. Option 1 would be if the plan is decided that they'll wind down come August and not move forward with that, and that option is about $11,519 for our share. So that's kind of the range. And so now, if there's no questions for me immediately, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Marshon for the update, and then we can talk further about funding.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide an update to you. I'm Petra Marshon, I'm the Executive Director of the Yolo Habitat JPA. As you may recall, in November of 2012, the JPA Board agreed to continue with the planning process for development of a Habitat Conservation Plan and a Natural Community Conservation Plan, only to the completion of the first draft. And I'm pleased to report that the completion of the first draft is on schedule and is also under budget. We received the internal draft of the plan from the consultants at the end of April, and that was so that the project manager, Heidi Schudt, and I could review it and provide comments before it's released to the public, and we fully anticipate that we're going to meet the deadline of releasing it to the public July 1st. And as this council knows, that's a major accomplishment, because this will be the first complete draft of the plan that has been released over the course of the planning process. The next step, then, will be a presentation to the JPA Board on July 17th on the content of the plan by the consultants and by the staff team, and then there'll be a decision, as you know, by the board on August 12th as to whether to continue with the planning process. So those are the decision points for the board this summer. In terms of grant funding, I expect that the JPA will have approximately $300,000 in grant funding remaining at the end of the fiscal year that could be applied towards the second draft of the plan if the JPA Board decides to move forward with the planning process. In addition, the Wildlife Conservation Board has indicated their support for a second application that the JPA could submit in the amount of approximately $500,000, which would round out the amount of money needed for the second draft of the plan. This funding would pay for the majority of the work associated with the second draft through, and the expected deadline for completion of that draft, if the board moves forward, is January of 2014. The only costs that are not covered by those grants are the ones that Charlene told you about today, which are the non-reimbursable costs that we are requesting from the member agencies, and those costs vary depending on what the decision is by the board on August 12th. There are obviously some, still some challenges that remain with the drafting of the plan in this calendar year. One I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is that the staff person who's been assigned to our plan from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has left the service, and that means that there is nobody from that important agency currently assigned to our plan, and as a result of budget difficulties, it's unclear whether or not that agency would be able to review our draft of the plan and provide comments on schedule, which could affect the overall schedule of the JPA. So I don't want to leave you with the impression that there are not still challenges that the JPA needs to overcome. That's a pretty significant one, that the Management Committee, which council member Ledesma is a part, will have to grapple in the very near future. I also briefly wanted to mention tonight, one of the other activities of the JPA that receives far less attention than the development of the plan, and that is the acquisition of Habitat Conservation easements. There's two categories of funding that are available for those types of easements, and it is in the planning agreement for the JPA that the city is a part of to help to acquire these easements. The first source of funding is obviously the Swenson's Hawk Fund that it's contributing into by each of the, as projects that affect Swenson's Hawk Habitat are moved forward. And there's approximately $900,000 left in that fund, and we have toured, along with the agency biologist that represents our region, nine separate properties that could be eligible for either funding from that fund or for grants from the Wildlife Conservation Board. Of those nine properties, two have actually drafted the legal easements that are required for consideration by the Wildlife Conservation Board, and it's my goal to submit at least three of those proposed easements to the Wildlife Conservation Board by July 1st. Regardless of whether the plan moves forward, this type of conservation would last in perpetuity, and there are a significant number of landowners in Yolo County who are interested in those types of easements, so it's of benefit regardless of whether the JPA moves forward in August. In addition, the state agencies have seen a lot, see a lot of value in the habitat that's in Yolo County, and so they are encouraging those types of grant applications. So at that point, you know, those are the two main activities of the JPA, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about either the planning process or our efforts to try and acquire conservation easements during this interim period.
Before we go to broader questions, I mean, Mayor Protem Ledesma is our representative on the...
Yeah, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank for the council, thank Petra, and recognize Petra for the work she's done, coming into a difficult role and taking the leadership with, as Executive Director for this JPA. As you're aware, through the circumstances from last summer, and getting through some financial accounting issues we've had, management issues we've had, through Petra, through Heidi Schudt, as well as a project, who's our project manager, they've done an extraordinary job in the last six months of pulling the organization together, putting the project plan together with a real deliverable, hard date deliverable, that is ultimately due to this body and the other four entities involved, the other three cities and the county, who have invested into this process. So I want to recognize the work they're doing. They are very diligent about the management. We have to look at the JPA as a, the work it does in two ways. One is around the actual administration of a government entity, a JPA, that we created. So there's management around that, and from the fiduciary duties, the administrative duties, as well as trying to draft a plan and grappling with, with the conservation issues that are really what we're trying to get at. And so they've done a remarkable job in getting the JPA Board members engaged, and they all are, and as well as getting the board moving quickly on issues. So we need to recognize the efforts, no matter what we all decide past August, I think those, we need to recognize that this has been turned around and it's moving forward, I want to recognize that. The other part I did want to give some background to was, is just a little bit, is around this August decision, decisioning time, and we're aware, we all made the decision and agreed that we need to keep moving forward. The one thing that we have done in the last two, three months, I think it is, in the last, since February, January, we started actually delving into actual conservation issues. The plan will come out, and there are, there's a strategy around how the county will go about in serving land and mitigating for all the species that are proposed. The draft plan will give us a first look at what that strategy is, and we began, aside from tackling the administrative duties of the JPA, we've actually started to deal with these issues and be briefed on these issues. One of the key milestones and achievements of our executive director and the staff and the board is engaging an advisory committee, that's what we're calling them now, right? Advisory Committee, made up, I know our staff has been attending, made up of a lot of folks, stakeholders in this process, landowners, and we even have one of our local developers, David Stroud, who's been appointed to this, in an effort to work along two project lines. One is getting to this administrative draft, and the other track with this advisory committee is doing is bringing up these issues so they can be vetted. We're not making any decisions on the actual conservation plan in our August meeting. We're actually just going to make the decision on, do we move forward with a continued investment to continue the plan in whatever form? And from there, if we do decide to move forward, we'll be making those strategic plans on what species we covered, how we do it, what might happen, and that will continue to be work we have with both the federal government and state governments, who have thus far been very cooperative, I should add. They've been very cooperative, they've been partnering with us. This is a setback with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, but we'll have to, we'll work through that, I'm confident we will. So I just want to give a little more broader assurance to my fellow council members here that this has been a very, one of the most more engaging boards I've been on, because A, we've had to, but B, we're trying to get to a point where we can look back and deliver to our constituents and those that are vested, that we've done a good job of providing a deliverable, and something that we could show for all the work we've done the past 15, whatever amount of years that we've tried to get to this point. So I just want to give that background and appreciate Petra as coming out.
Discussion? Mr. Kristof?
If Fish and Wildlife is not going, is understaffed.
Right.
And so Phase 2 of the, the process seems like it gets delayed. What's that translate into costs?
You know what, that's a great question. It depends on how long they delay, because ideally, I, it could potentially not cost the JPA any additional funds if it's a short delay. So if, for example, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, which council member Ledesma mentioned, has been very committed even to go so far as the director of the Department of Fish and Wildlife has signed coordinating principles to commit staff to the process, but we do not have that at the federal level with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service can't provide comments in a timely manner, it could be that we have to wait to have our consultants incorporate those comments until we have those, so that we don't spend money and duplicate efforts, and that would essentially add time to the end of our schedule. Right now, we have a 36-month schedule that we're about six months into, and so that would add however many months to the end of the schedule. I think it's possible to manage it without incurring, you know, significant additional costs, but again, it depends on the, it depends on the amount of time, and that's something that we have to work through with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They have, the head of that division has been in contact with the JPA and is directing all inquiries to her at this point, so they seem to have a willingness to try to work through it, we just don't have an answer yet because of the hiring freeze at the federal level.
Right. And that, from what we hear on television and
Right.
sequester and all these other crazy words they throw out now, doesn't look like there'll be any hiring any too soon.
Right.
And so I'm a little bit concerned with that. What happens if West Sacramento pulls out?
If West Sacramento pulls out, the other agencies have to make the determination whether they want to continue or not, and if they did continue without West Sacramento, there would be increased costs for the member agencies that were left, and then there would have to be a decision made about how West Sacramento activities are treated, because right now, West Sacramento's projects are covered activities under the plan, and like, for example, UC Davis is not a member of the JPA, and they don't pay to continue the process, but they have an option to pay into it if the plan is completed at the, at the end of the process. If they want some of their activities covered, it's called a certificate of inclusion process. So I don't know the full answer to that question, but I know it would involve, you know, the other jurisdictions having to make a decision about whether to continue without West Sacramento.
Would it be worthwhile for the city of West Sacramento to explore the possibility of withdrawing? Because, I mean, there's not a lot of development that's going on right now, so there's not a real big need for, you know, Habitat Conservation. But at the same time, there will be. I mean, growth will, growth will start up again, and we just to make, we need to make sure we have the connections with Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, and all of the entities that you need to pull permits from.
Right.
So that projects can move forward. And it seemed, a number of years ago, it seemed like the best way to do that would be to include all the cities and put this JPA together, and, well, $50 million later, whatever it's been, it's been a whole lot of money's been spent on all of this. We still don't have anything.
Right.
And so, and I realize that we're making great strides towards correcting that now, and I too would like, appreciate the effort that you've been putting in, because from the things that I hear, you've been doing yeoman's work, a lot of kudos. But at the same time, there's been a lot of money that's put into this, and there's just a little bit more to go so we can get the initial draft, but then, under the second draft, what kind of figure are we talking about?
In terms of completing?
Completing.
How much it would cost to complete the draft? I think our estimate right now is about between $600,000 and $800,000, and that's the amount that we have in grant funding. I did want to make one thing very clear. As the Executive Director, it's my job to, not to advocate for the plan or to tell you you should withdraw, it is to provide you with the, the board and the individual you should withdraw. It is to provide you with the, the board and the individual councils with the best possible information about what the benefits are and what the costs are of it. And in addition to, so what, that's what we plan to do for that August meeting. And we plan, we're, right now, we're in the process of talking to the executive directors of other plans, ones that are approved and ones that aren't approved, and saying, what's different for you?
Right.
Now that you have a permit, what's different, you know? And also, at the same time, trying to find out the similarities between their development and our development, because, you know, if they have problems with species that we don't have problems with,
Right.
we can't compare, right? And Heidi is a planner by training. I don't know how many of you are familiar with her background. So, the combination of the two of us, I think, is, is making a pretty effective research team in answering that question. And we really hope to have something in writing to present to our, to our board and to the individual councils as a part of that process. I do think that there are a lot of unanswered questions, because one of the, one of the biggest issues is the cost of the plan, the cost of implementing the plan. And we will not have that chapter until the plan is ready to come out, and that's going to spark a whole new set of assumptions and questions about the planning process. And then, also, we do not know at this point, and this is really a negotiation component rather than a, you know, a planning component, is how much is the state and federal government willing to pay to implement this conservation plan? They've already put a lot of money into the planning process. They've already said from a policy perspective that Yolo County is home to species and to land whose planning practices is, as, you know, exemplified by the Sustainable Community Strategy and the blueprint, that, that they want to encourage to stay that way in perpetuity.
No.
And so, the, so that my, my role, I think, as executive director is going to be, A, provide as much information as possible of the benefits and costs, so the board can make a fair decision. And then, if the board decides to move forward in August, then during that second draft process, my job would be to push the agencies on, how much are you willing to pay? There, if there aren't significant benefits to this plan, to my member agencies, you need to step up in a pretty significant way to, you know, incentivize the member agencies to continue with this type of comprehensive conservation planning. And I don't have the answer to that yet, and I won't have the answer before August 12th. And so, there's really, you know, two separate, you know, sets of information that would be developed and two separate decision points that the member agencies are going to have to make. The first is, based on what information we have of the benefit costs in August 12, you know, of 2013, do we move forward? And if you decide to move forward in August, you're going to have another decision point in January 2014, which is going to be, based on how much it's going to cost us, do we continue with the natural community conservation plan and the habitat conservation plan? Do we drop back to just the habitat conservation plan, or do we abandon the process altogether? So, I think those options are all on the table, quite frankly.
Well, a lot of that, too, is going to include the state.
Right.
Because we've got to get the permit, so that the, I mean, this really is sort of like one-stop shopping, or just really makes it easier for the development community in some respects, because they can just go through this process and, and they don't have to jump through all of the various environmental hoops, or the agencies, so to speak. So, I just need to make sure that, once this is done, we are going to be able to have that kind of a process, so that we don't have to go to, you know, the feds and the state and the state
Right.
and the state and the feds. We just don't have to go through all this.
That is ultimately the goal.
Right.
And the question is...
I haven't had to say this, I haven't had to say this for a while, but we will confiscate any phones that are left on. It's a major distraction to the meeting. So, if it's yours and you can't locate it or turn it off, please step out of the room. All right, Petraia, thanks.
So, yeah, I just think that there's, there's some, there's some significant conversations that need to occur still.
Okay.
And I will say that it is, it is a long, that is the goal at the end of the process, is to have that type of permitting, a permit. But, I mean, if you talk to your developers in West Sacramento, they'll tell you that they may have problems in the future, but it hasn't been that difficult to mitigate under CEQA
That's right.
right now. So, that's, that's what Heidi and I, those are the tough questions that Heidi and I are asking. What are the benefits of having this comprehensive permit to the member agencies, and what are the costs? And based on that, you know, the member agencies are going to have to decide, and the JPA board's going to have to decide whether to continue. And we may have all that, enough information for you in August to make that decision. We may need until January 2014 to make that decision. It's, it's really going to be up to the member agencies to decide at those two, you know, key points.
Thank you. And I'm, and I'm comfortable with the, with the recommendation. And this is a, a big challenge on every dimension. I mean, it's been just one big fail, partly just bad management, I mean, quite frankly, before, but before Petraia came on board, both bad management and, and poor oversight and governance. We spent, we spent a lot of time at the very begin, separate from that, we spent a lot of time at the very beginning, as was predict, as we predicted, with a stakeholder-driven process that was too driven by some of our partners across the causeway in both cities, that saw this as an opportunity to create a grand, you know, a grand habitat restoration, also to, to create the green belt that they'd always dreamed of between their two cities. And these were expensive propositions, and the plan is, was, never had the capacity to be that, to be that. Right? It wasn't a new source of funding to do some sort of massive restoration of something. And so, both of those things together contributed locally to the, what the problem that we're in, along with, you know, a lot, a lot of things that we couldn't control because of the state and federal processes that were happening. So, all, all of that's happened. It wouldn't be, I mean, before we launched this process, most of our development, development that required the permits were large developments. And it was a, it was a challenging process. It was not optimal from habitat, because what you would say is, okay, you want to build 5,000 units, then you have to go out and acquire this many acres, and you have to get our permission for which those acres are, whatever. It was, it was dumb, right? I mean, it was a big deal for the developer, because they had to figure out, they had to acquire the actual property. And it was kind of random. Where could they get property that, that kind of sort of fit?
Yeah.
But, and then they had to convince the agency to say yes, and that was great, but, but that, you know, if you had a piece of property over here and a piece of property over there, you know, how does a Swenson's Hawk supposed to know that, and how does it get from this one to this one? Right? It was, it was not, from a habitat perspective and from a development perspective, it was too expensive and not very effective. And it really only worked at all if you were a major developer. So, now that we're switching to more of an infill development kind of a deal here, the idea that somebody who owns, you know, just a small piece of property and wants to develop something is going to have to go out and find, you know, a 10-square inches of habitat, you know, to go to the, to the federal and state agency, here's my mitigation, is ridiculous. I mean, so, so it's, we can't just turn back the clock and go back to where they, that we were doing it. And, but, but the original idea hasn't really worked out either, which is, we'll just, we'll, we'll do with this through some sort of centralized unified permit. So, but it sounds to me like you are asking all of the right questions and analyzing all the right trade-offs, because there's no perfect answer here, which makes me very comfortable about the direction that we're heading, that the, the JPA board itself has gotten, you know, has gotten very serious finally about its, what, what its role is in terms of oversight and also about what it, what its broader role envisioned aren't. If we do keep the JPA going in the long term, I think we do need some principles around those issues. When we adopted this, this framework a long time ago, and some of our friends in Yolo County and Davis, you know, insisted on this broader, this broader notion of what we were trying to accomplish, we don't need, we need to be clear that that's, that our, our objective is to actually acquire on a cost-effective basis habitat to allow for development to go forward and to actually protect species. Does, it's, has done no good for, it has done no good for species. I mean, they're, they're the ones who've lost out in this whole process.
Yes, that's true.
And that, that's, that really ought to be the only, the only goal. And so, notions around, we're, we're creating a Davis Woodland Green Belt or all that sort of stuff, that is a nice consequence, but that's not the objective.
Right.
So, we need to, we need to lock that down, whereas if we get to the point where we're saying, yeah, that's just JPA structure, and we're going to do the NCCP but not the HCP or vice versa, all that needs to be part of the consideration. But, but I'm very comfortable at this stage that the, the board, and particularly that Mr. Ledesma and Mr. Saylor together have really dived into this in painstaking details, working with you on all of the alternatives. And when we came to us in November and asked for some support, and we said, "Look, the problem is you're not making progress on the plan, and we've acquired no easements, and you've, you've, you've delivered," right? So, we, we agreed to, you know, to a share of the shortfall the last time around and express, you know, essentially some non-negotiable about what needed to happen, and you have delivered on those. So, I, to me, it's, you know, the progress is in the right direction, the right issues and questions and alternatives are being assessed, and we, we got, this is our best option moving, from moving forward at this stage. And if the results of, of the work that you're doing show us something else, I'm, you know, I hope that's not the case, but, but if this is the right, if this is the right direction, we ought to, we ought to continue that. So, this is, the $39,000 is a necessary step in order to, to, to keep those options open, and so I support it. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Viegas?
So, thank you, Petraia, for the work you've done. I served on it for five years, and you're absolutely right. It was a disaster. Every time we got close to actually making a purchase of land with all the money that was going into the pot, given the amount of construction that was happening, particularly with the amount that was coming from West Sacramento, it was driven by a stakeholder group that just wasn't ever going to let that happen. I mean, the objectives and the, the goals of the stakeholder groups were so broad and so misguided, it never gave us the opportunity to get to where, so you've done a good job of articulating that. But I, I get the sense you're, you're going down a different path. So, thanks, thanks for the work. I think it's going to, in August, I think we're going to get answers to questions that we've all been asking for, for me at least 12 years, but it sounds like for some, up to 20. So, thank you.
If I may, just, the, the thing you'll, you'll have in August is actually something tangible to read. And I think that's something that is, that as board members, we acknowledged, I think, when Petraia started, is like, we, we still haven't seen a plan. And it was this black box that sat back there, because it was going back and forth with the agencies. And, and so, that in and of itself will be some of the accomplishment. And so, to Mayor's point, what, you know, based on the early direction and, and the plan that was being developed, what is there? I think that's what we're going to start to see. We'll see this plan, and we'll see the implementation steps that be necessary. We'll see some of the costs of, of implementing this plan, because there's the, the cost of planning it, and then there's the actual cost of implementing it. And I think that's the reality check we all have. We'll have the opportunity at that point, if we decide to move on, to move forward in a different direction or whatever else. You know, and there, and there will be more challenges. I don't want to leave this council without an understanding that we're, we're smooth sailing, we're operating, we're governing, we're doing all the things you've articulated. But increasingly, is, you mentioned the Bay Delta Protection Plan, who plans on mitigating some of their, their, their work in Yolo County. How does that impact us? Do we, do we coordinate with them? And I testified at the Senate for a bill by Lois Wolf a couple of weeks ago, that, that tried to address that, to make sure there was some coordination, because we don't want to get caught in that, in that as well. So, again, these are the continuing challenges we're going to face from an issue standpoint as well, as well as a management one, working with the agencies. So, I appreciate your support on this, and I, I'm, well, listening to your feedback, I'm sure Petraia is as well, and we'll continue down the path to deliver the plan.
All right, we can make the motion.
This is just a status?
No, the second one, authorization for the city manager. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mayor Protemla Desma, and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Turn down, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll turn to the consent agenda, which is items three through 11. At the council's, councilmembers' desks is a memo from the city manager, which describes, which is the attachment to item eight, item eight being the Rayleigh's Dock and Rice Mill Pier item. So, the actual contract for services is, has been provided, as was noted in the agenda. All right, so are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
Six and eight. Come on, Bill, what's going on?
Viegas, did you have something? Okay. Okay, then item six is presentation of potential refinancing of the 2003 California Statewide Communities Development Authority Water and Wastewater Revenue Bonds. Mr. Kristoff?
Oh, are there 12 years left on these bonds? Is that what this is all about?
There are 12 years left on these remaining of the 2003 bonds, yes.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
All right, item eight is consideration of a warrant of contract to DHD Incorporated for engineering design, environmental assessment, and permits for the Rayleigh's Dock and Rice Mill Pier. Mr. Kristoff?
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Do we have a plan on what to do with these docks when they're completed?
We have a scope, sir, as far as design right now, and we will be having public meetings to get input as far as what the public would like to see the docks used for.
So, the Ray, let's just take the Rayleigh's Dock, for instance.
Yes, sir.
So, there may be, once the, the gangplank and the dock and everything is all redone, there may be a way in which the public will have an opportunity to use the Riverwalk and eventually walk down the gangplank and out onto the dock itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
That is the intent.
That's the intent.
Full accessibility.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Viegas?
No, thank you. That, that was exactly what I was going to ask. I know the general plan, even the specific plan, talks about public access. I know we've long talked about having some way to get, you know, vessels, you know, close up to the shore and
Right.
be able to publicly access the water from the West Sacramento side beyond the Roderick Boat Ramp, and I think this is a great, great start. So, are these capital, so where, where are the, the 583, 241, where's that coming from? Is that, what's, what's the source? What's the, what's the source of the funding?
The source of the funding was a CIP project that was previously funded.
Big, yeah, okay. I'd seen it in there, I just didn't realize we're now at the point where we can, okay, all right, very good.
And I was, I was just a little concerned about, as far as liability. I mean, walking down the gangplank itself is, you know, I, I can, I think I can comprehend and see what's going to happen as far as there'll be sides and there'll be, you know, things so that if people won't be able to get off left or right as they're down the middle of the gangplank. But, okay, I, I just, and I saw in here where there were some issues and liability was addressed.
Yes.
And so, okay.
So, how, how much is in the CIP for, for this portion?
$700,000.
For this portion of the project?
Just over $700,000.
Just over $700,000?
$725,000 already currently in the CIP budget for this.
Okay. And so, this is coming in under?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any further?
Thank you.
All right, those are all the questions and comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Seconded. It's been moved by Mayor Protemla Desma and seconded by Mr. Kristoff.
Mr. Mayor, procedurally, excuse me, if you don't mind, I'm going to have to abstain from item...
Number nine?
Number nine, sorry, yes.
All right, so let's, let's take a vote on the consent agenda other than item nine first, if that's acceptable to the maker of the second.
I'll make a motion to, on all consent items except item nine.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, item nine.
I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries with an abstention by Mr. Viegas. That brings us to item 12, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution 13-29, authorizing the application for tax-exempt multifamily, multifamily housing revenue bonds for the Holly Court Apartments project. Mr. Robinson?
The California Municipal Financing Authority is a joint powers authority of which the city of West Sacramento has been a member since 2012. Its purpose is to serve as the conduit issuer for taxable and tax-exempt bonds that benefit projects that have public benefits in California. Link Housing has requested that the CMFA issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $4 million to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of the Holly Court Apartments complex, which is located at 445 Maple Street. CMFA has requested that the city conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act or TEFRA hearing concerning CMFA's issuance of the bonds. The TEFRA hearing is required by federal tax law to ensure that the public has the opportunity to comment on the issuance of the proposed financing. The bonds that are proposed will be the sole responsibility of Link Housing and will not create any financial or legal obligation for the city or affect the city's bond rating. The staff is requesting that the city council conduct a public hearing, adopt Resolution 1329 approving issuance of the bonds, and direct the city manager to deposit any funds received by the city from CMFA related to the project into the Housing Trust Fund. If the council has questions about the project, we have representatives from Link Housing here and also from CMFA.
All right, are there questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing. We have no requests to speak on this item, but because it is a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Return to the council. Are any further questions or discussion or for a motion?
I guess just a comment, and the comment I had was the same one I had last time, and that is, I really do not like the fact that we go out and we use bonds to build... that is, I really do not like the fact that we go out and we use bonds to build housing and to build all these different things, and then turn around and refinance the bonds and then extend the years. These bonds eventually have to be paid off, and I just think it makes a lot of sense that you... If you're gonna do a 30-year bond, that 30-year bond gets paid within 30 years. I mean, and I think everybody has seen with the interest rates and all the things that are going on now, that is something that is achievable. We can do that, but this particular agenda item does not do that. It extends the years that the bond can... Will keep going on and on and on. But, anyway, it's not anything I wanna vote no on the agenda item, but at the same time, it's just an issue that just sort of grates at me.
Any further discussion?
I'll make the motion. Isn't that your?
Amy?
Did you have anything?
No.
I'll make the motion for the recommended action.
It's been moved and seconded, the recommended action by Mayor Protem LaDesma, seconded by Mr. Vegas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries, item 13, his presentation on the draft update to the 2013-2021 housing element. Where is that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're seeking comment from the city council on the draft 2013 housing element. As most of you know, the housing element is one of the seven mandated general plan elements. It assesses housing needs in the city and lays out policies for addressing those needs. And unlike other general plan elements, the housing element is reviewed by HCD, and who also sets the schedule for the housing element updates. The housing element must be certified for adequate general plan compliance. Let me get the... Or point up, I'm sorry. There we go. So, the housing element must be certified for adequate general plan compliance. In addition, many grant funding sources like CDBG and Home require a state-certified housing element as part of the threshold requirements when applying. Also, jurisdictions without a certified housing element face the possibility of legal challenges. The State Department of Finance determines the statewide regional housing needs, which in turn assigns them to the Regional Council of Governments. In a region, the Sacramento Council of Governments, of course, SECOG then distributes the regional number among its member jurisdiction. The overall regional number is just over 100,000. As you can see from the table, West Sacramento's 2014-2021 allocation is almost 6,000 units, which are distributed among five standard income categories. Much of the information in the city's existing housing element, which was for the 2008-2013 planning period, remains current, and as a result, only limited changes are anticipated in this housing element update. We remain committed to the housing element goals and policies to address the housing needs in the city. And while there are few proposed changes in the housing element update, staff is recommending noteworthy modifications to the inclusionary housing program, which is a program within Goal One of our housing element. Successful implementation of the inclusionary housing program in its current form has been affected due to primarily two reasons: the elimination of redevelopment and the recent housing market conditions. Because of these challenges, staff is seeking to implement a more sustainable inclusionary housing program that focuses affordable housing efforts to households with low and very low incomes, where staff feels the need is, and also reduces the program's financial impact on market rate development by, among other things, allowing greater flexibility for production and produces high-quality, well-managed housing. Should be noted as well that the changes that we proposed in this revisions to the inclusionary housing policy are intended to implement concepts of the city's Community Investment Action Plan. As part of the proposed changes, Chapter 1510 would be eliminated, and this is the chapter that encompassed the former redevelopment project area. Chapter 1540 would be amended to remove the moderate income production requirements, and as a result, would only leave a 10% production requirement for both rental and for sale housing. Additionally, alternatives to production would be considered, such as participation in the city's housing trust fund, the acquisition, rehabilitation, or conversion of existing market rate units, construction of inclusionary units at an off-site location, or acquisition and preservation of at-risk affordable units. Again, these are all elements that are intended to implement concepts in the city's Community Investment Action Plan. The final housing element must be adopted by the city council and approved by HCD by October of this year. Because of that, staff with the assistance of its consultant has been following a pretty aggressive schedule for completion. To date, as part of the community outreach, staff has met with Legal Services of Northern California and staff from the Building Industry Association to discuss the changes to the housing element and, more specifically, the amendments that we are proposing to the inclusionary housing policy. We've also held a meeting with the West Sacramento Partners to discuss these changes and have held a public workshop at the Housing Advisory Commission. This was back in April. We will continue to do our community outreach, but at this point, we would like to get comments from the council and any members of the public for the update. Myself and my colleague David Tilly are here to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff? Mr. Kristof?
Any comments?
Nope.
People to speak?
Nope.
Okay, well, I'll start off. Some communities have gone from 15% inclusionary to 10%, and that's one of the proposals, if I read this thing correctly, that's one of the proposals that we are proposing to do also.
Correct.
The Planning Commission, when they heard this, what questions and what recommendations and comments did the Planning Commission make?
Well, similarly to some of the comments we received at the first hack meeting, the planning period now being eight years versus five years was a long time for some commissioners to sort of look out, and so there were some, you know, observations that perhaps we should continue to look at, you know, a moderate, you know, as such, should that need start to arise again in the future if there are, you know, some big changes in the market? And so, we certainly are, you know, even if we move forward with the housing element in this ordinance in this fashion, it doesn't mean that we can't change it, you know, during this planning period. Of course, if we do change our housing along the way, we do have to go back to HCD.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But that was, you know, raised by a couple of commissioners at the Planning Commission and also at the hack about, you know, not necessarily completely forgetting about moderate, at least to see if that starts to come back up, you know, over this eight-year planning period, because this is a longer planning period than what has been the case, you know, previously. They'd only had five years in the past.
Okay, there's a couple of things that I wanted to comment on, and that is, we put together an affordable project over on West Capitol Avenue called Parkside. We had to go outside the area to find people to rent those units or to buy those units. That, number one, tells me that there's not a demand. I mean, we had to go to Sacramento, we had to go to Woodland, we had to go to different places to bring low-income people into the community to rent those particular apartments. That doesn't seem like there is a need for additional low-income units, because at the same time, a number of units went on sale out in the south portion of our city. I don't know what the purchase price of the homes were, but they sold within five days. There were like 20 homes they sold within, or 15 homes, they sold within five days. The market is there for market-rate housing, because market-rate housing, quite frankly, is at a, what was a few years ago, a low-income level. And so, it's... It doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we would continue to build affordable units, number one, so that we could import people, and, number two, so that it would not make it as... It just makes it more expensive for the existing developer to build housing, because now they've got to build, even if it's 10% inclusionary, they have got to build that 10% and have it available for low-income folks, when, number one, the market isn't there, and, number two, the value isn't there, and if we are going to try to stimulate some kind of growth and stimulate additional development moving forward within our community, then it makes sense that we would keep that affordable component out of it so that the developer wasn't responsible for it, and that would lower the price of homes completely. And it would at least get the development community to... It would at least get the development community to start to invest, because every time we go through our budget process, we hear that Parks and Rec fees are too high, we hear that this fee's too high, we hear that that fee's... Traffic impact fees are too high. Well, this is a way that you could keep those fees at that level and yet have the development community save some money at the same time. And so, that was one of the comments that I wanted to try to incorporate into this whole thing, and I really don't know how you do that. But one of the other things I thought of was, we have a developer that has to build affordable units in the Bridge District. Is there a way or can a formula be developed that allows that developer to reach his obligation by, instead of building 70 units, which was proposed that he do, he could build like 40 units onsite and rehab 30? Is there a way to put a policy, or is there a way to put a program together that allows that? Because we do have rehab units out there that are not under a covenant, so to speak, but at the same time, it would really be beneficial if those affordable dollars could go towards that rehab unit and make that thing nicer. Is there... I don't know if there's a way to do that. It was just a comment that I wanted to have maybe staff think about and see if there's a way to make all that work.
One of the changes that we are trying to incorporate into the amendments are allowing more flexibility to the developers to allow them to fulfill all or a portion of their inclusionary housing requirements through other means. Acquisition of market-rate units that need some level of rehabilitation and putting affordability covenants on them, paying some type of a fee. So, that is one of the main priorities of this, of these amendments, is to allow a lot more flexibility to developers to lower their, you know, their cost and promote the goals that we are looking to implement.
Yeah, because I saw in here something to the effect that the development community could pay $5,900 or whatever it was towards the price of a home, and... Or a fee, so to speak, and it would then... That money could be used offsite, that money could be used for rehab, and that, to me, does make some sense. So, I'll be looking forward to some kind of an ordinance or some kind of a resolution or whatever you guys are preparing to at least take a look at that and see if there's a way we can do additional rehab.
Yeah, I mean, I think most developers will choose to pay the pay-and-in-lu charge, which is fine to me. I mean, this is an ongoing sort of permanent disagreement about the basic assumption. I don't believe there's any temporal or spatial relationship between our fees and housing and actual development. When we've done these, sort of, let's cut our fees for a little while or whatever, it has induced zero development. When we've increased our fees because we had to for stormwater or whatever, it has depressed zero development. The communities in the region, Rancho and Elk Grove, that every other day are cutting their fees at somebody's request, are experiencing zero more development than we are. There's just no relationship, because it's such a small part of the transaction. It's all driven by the larger market conditions. So, right now, anybody that can get a lot and can build on a lot is doing that, right? And despite, no matter what our... Nobody's come and really, and says, "The last thing holding me up, I would build right now if I just didn't have this... If this fee were $500 less." For individual homeowners, that's an issue, but for developers who are building, you know, 100 units or 1,000 units, it's just not an issue. It's just, you know, it's a question of how much more profit can be made. By the same token, though, I don't... I mean, I think the issues around the market, the housing market are right on, and so the trust fund approach makes more sense to me anyway, if we do it right, right? If we don't underestimate the cost of... The equivalent cost to provide gap financing for affordable housing to develop, which I worry we will always want to do, right? We will always be hearing from our stakeholder groups that, "Gosh, you gotta cut your fees, you gotta cut your fees," and we won't get enough money in the fund to be able to do that. And we need that, right? We need the ability... When we've talked about being a community for people at all stages of their life, when we want to make sure that your daughter can move back home when she leaves the Air Force, that, you know, we want to have a diversity of housing and not just in one part of the community, right? Okay, welcome home, but you can't live in the waterfront district, you can't live in the downtown, you can't live in Southport. There's just one part of the community that's free. We've been very committed to that ideal, and the trust fund approach could be a better way for us to do that than having each project on an inclusionary basis. I get the rationale for that, and I could see if we did that, if we did that well, it would be better than the inclusionary process, but we would have to do it well. So, when you actually bring back... The outline here in the housing element makes sense to me for all the reasons that the conversation just led to, but we need to really design how we're gonna do it and the structures that we're gonna make, hold ourselves accountable, so that we don't, you know, fall prey to every VIA or region builders' request every other week that if, you know, "Just cut your fees one more time, because Galt did it, so you have to do it too," and then we don't have the ability when we need to. Or if we're not acquiring property when we can afford it, right? If we had the trust fund, you'd want to acquire some property now, hold it until the market was different and it was hard to get, and you couldn't buy an affordable property in the market, and then we would be able to move forward. But if you did nothing, if we did nothing, we said, "Look, we're not even gonna wipe it all away right now, because you can buy affordable housing in the market," then when the market starts to rise a lot, then we don't have the... And we said, "Okay, now we're gonna impose a new, a higher..." a higher, a higher charge for the trust fund, well, there's no way we're going to get that, and the cost of land and construction is going to be too high for us to do it. So we, I mean, we've taken the long view, I think we have to, we just need to design the trust fund approach in a way that really honestly makes sense and works. And isn't, isn't, where the objective is not to cut developer costs, but to make it, to make the process easier for them, but more importantly, to make it work better for the objective that we're trying to achieve. And now that we have the freedom of not having to deal with all of the redevelopment issues. Having said that, we don't have unlimited freedom because, as you said at the beginning, the real issues are, you know, that even if we wanted to make all these changes, if we said, let's just wipe away all the, we'll have no inclusionary at all or whatever, we still have to deal with, you know, HCD doesn't just like take our housing element and say, hey, that sounds good to it, whatever you say, it sounds good to us. They, you know, they're, it's going to be a challenge to get some of these changes through, and we don't want to deal with litigation from the housing advocates and others. So we need to walk that line appropriately. But I think if we approach it from the, from the beginning and from the perspective, what are we actually trying to achieve as a community for, you know, for the future? And then let's design the right structures and systems and accountability to make that happen that we'll be in a much better position to deal with the HCD potential concerns and with affordable housing advocates. I did have a more technical question, which is, you know, looking at this as an eight-year, as an eight-year plan, I understand, I totally get the concept of underpromising. But to say over eight years, so we're going to do this whole, we're going to do this secondary dwelling unit thing, and over an eight-year period, our objective is to permit five secondary units. Our objective is to assist five lower-income homebuyers over a period of eight years with a, with a low-income homebuyer assistance program. Our objective is to do one, one or more mixed-use projects over a period of eight years. It seems like we're taking the underpromising notion to a pretty severe extreme. And to me, and I'll also raise a question, why are you doing, why are we doing these programs? Why are you doing, why are we doing these projects if all we're doing over an eight-year period is helping five people? It seems like, it seems, or five households. So what, I mean, what's the rationale for those kinds of targets?
My understanding was that it was on an annual basis, so up to five on an annual basis over the eight-year period. We can certainly word it better so that it's clear, but that's how we were looking at that.
Okay, on the secondary one, it says permit five secondary units during the planning period. So that's why it sounded like that was the eight-year period. But so five a year might be too many, actually. But five over eight years, I think, doesn't, doesn't, that, it just looked like we were, like you're not serious. And why would you invest in creating and implementing and administering a program that's going to have that little of an impact? And, well, I mean, why bother? I mean, that's, I mean, let's not, we shouldn't be having a coordinator in our city operation that's doing homebuyer assistance if we're going to be assisting two-thirds of a household every year. It's just, it's, it's kind of seems wasteful. The mixed-use development section is very heavily West Capitol Avenue-focused. So in, this is on page 113. So we're going to promote, the top-level goal is bigger. It's West Capitol Avenue, the waterfront zone, and appropriate commercial zones. And it goes on to focus mainly on West Capitol, which I get, but we're, but the place where we're, the places where we will be constructing the most housing will be the Bridge District, Rayleigh's Landing, the Bluffs, you know, over the eight-year period. So it seems like an odd, it's, it looks more like a backwards-looking statement, especially since, you know, we're going to do infrastructure like the library or whatever, stuff that we've already done.
Yeah, part of why there's a lot in there is that we certainly have done a lot more planning in the Bridge District, and we're ready for a lot more closer for implementation. You know, we still have some work to do in the, in the general plan, certainly through on West Capitol Avenue to, you know, get that zoning, you know, updated, you know, enough in the real world to match, you know, some of our mixed-use objectives along West Capitol Avenue. You know, that came from some of those, you know, larger efforts, you know, in the past. But we certainly will look at this section here and, you know, see if this needs to be, you know, updated a little further to align with our current goals.
Mayor Protemba Desma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you raised some of the issues, and Councilmember Kristoff raised some of the questions I had. On the, on the element, I'm sorry, I'm going to my notes here because I'm trying to do it. The iPad is proving difficult. But it is marked off on, the census reports that I read came back, and I just can't find it online to get to the page quick enough. But so on page, it's shown on page 239, where it's the recommendations, proposed changes to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. So those are the census data that is driving our decisions on focusing on the very low and low income? Is that, those are, that's real data that we're using to drive that?
That's real data, and we've also done a recent survey of our ten largest one-hundred percent affordable projects. We took a look at what the vacancy rates were, and we found that, on average, they are all at ninety-five percent occupancy with six-month waiting list. So that combined with some of the census data, you know, leads us to believe that that's where the need is. You know, especially in the very low income, in extremely low income household range.
So that answers some of the concern Mr. Kristoff had, and just in terms of, based on the data, there is a demand for this housing, just the funding of it, how do we get there?
Projects that target those income categories also tend to be the most competitive, you know, for funding as targeting is deeper. But we do believe that, you know, there's certainly that aligns with the real-world need out there. And some of this very recent census information, you know, seems to confirm, you know, some of those, that demographic information we still have in our community.
And for the most part, I am supportive of the, what you've designed from the inclusionary housing, what your goals are, and what we're trying to achieve by making it more efficient. I'm just trying to understand how we'll measure its effectiveness along the way, especially on the efficiency side. Is it just, I think the mayor pointed out, I think most people are going to just take the in-lu fee and deposit it in the trust fund, and is that our way of knowing that it's?
Well, I think historically, our metric has, you know, has been production. And we certainly have produced many units over the years. I think something like eight hundred units in the last, you know, planning period we have produced either through rehab and/or new unit, new construction. And so, we'll continue to move because that is one of the, you know, matters that was raised, you know, to us at some of our stakeholder meetings, is that they do want to make sure that if we are in a fee environment, that the fee program yields, you know, real units, you know, on the ground. And it isn't just funds that accumulate and then nothing happens.
Right.
So that's where, you know, where, to us, we'll see largely is the production of units. Because under this manner and with the housing trust fund and this means in the real world, we are likely to be able to produce, you know, the most amount of units, you know, through this means than through the traditional inclusionary housing because we use these funds as gap financing
Sure.
on larger projects.
Okay, thank you. Viegas?
Yep. So is there, and I looked through it, I didn't see anything. Is there anywhere in the report, or maybe this isn't the place for it, to show what the expected trends are relative to what the demand is going to be in Sacramento? Because I know when the boom was occurring some years back, there, you know, we received all kinds of trend data that showed that there really wasn't going to be a need for market-rate housing, that, excuse me, that, yes, market-rate, you know, single-family, twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot homes were sort of coming to an end, and the demand was going to be for more senior and more mixed-use and more infill boomer-style housing, right? So that was going to be the bigger demand. And so I'm just curious in terms of what we're expecting, or what we should be expecting or what we're predicting the demand will be. And the reason I say that is because one of the things I think we should focus some effort on, and that is preserving some of the existing housing. I know that Margaret McDowell, I can't believe it's already at that point, but in five years from now, five or six years from now, it runs the risk of converting to market rate, should that happen. I know the probability is low, it seems, but there's no guarantees. And so I think we certainly want to keep an eye on those kinds of projects, particularly senior housing, which we know, I think, is underserved. And we're, I mean, I know there's a, there's a demand, a pent-up demand for that as we've seen some of the projects come forward. So I guess through a couple of questions in there, but in terms of the trends, is there any data that you have that shows where we should be going or what the demand is going to be?
We have not done a lot of research on trends, but we can certainly look into that to see what type of housing we can anticipate in the near future. In terms of Margaret McDowell matter, as you pointed out, the probability of that project converting to market rate is very, very low. It is owned by Christian Church Homes, whose business is affordable housing. So the probability is very low, but because it is reaching an end of their regulatory agreement, it had to be listed.
Are there others that are also getting anywhere near those periods, the end of the term?
Not that we're aware of, no. That was the only one.
That, I'd be interested if it's easy to gather that kind of data because I think it's important, as much work and much money and effort that's gone into creating them, we certainly want to make sure we're keeping an eye on preserving them if the opportunity presents itself. I mean, obviously, at the end of the term is what it is. But I know there's some, actually, there's quite a few that are spread throughout town that were built in the early nineties when this whole thing was getting started. And those might be coming, I forget the term of some of those, but I know that those are going to be coming to an end here pretty soon. And I think we want to keep an eye on what that looks like and the probability of keeping that stock available, if, should that be one of our goals. But I would like to see some trends because I think as Bill indicated earlier, the idea that if you build it and you don't, you're not able to use it in and of itself isn't a deal killer for me because I think over time, we want to preserve the right or the ability for existing residents to come back and move into quality affordable. I don't want to just use affordable because affordable can mean a lot of things, but quality affordable housing. And I think we want to make sure, even though, I mean, you're not going to build apartment buildings, one apartment at a time. I mean, there's some economies in building a large, you know, the entire project. And the fact that you can't always fill it with West Sacramento residents, you know, isn't the end of the world. But I think over time, those will become available, and that will create the sort of diverse housing stock that we want, so. But the trend, trend information would be helpful if it's available. I know State Cogs put some stuff together, I know I saw quite a bit of the work that they had done.
And just earlier today, as an aside, we met with a developer representative for a large project in Southport who's been doing some extensive research and has kind of retooled their project concept a few times, you know, as some of that market information is coming down. And one of the things they keep, you know, talking about is, you know, fairly soon, almost half the population will be over fifty years old. And so, it's such a large demographic, you know, inertia there that we certainly expect, and they're kind of retooling their project in many respects to try to address, you know, that need. You know, I think it's called the gray wave or something to that effect is kind of, kind of the, you know, term for it. So those demographic trends are out there, we will provide those, you know, for you, you know, when we, when we come back, you know, next month. But we have some real-world information that we just, we're just getting some info on today, as a matter of fact. So we'll relay that when we come back up.
So the trust fund, the ability, I mean, we've always tried to just build units as we can, both for the objective of building them and also to like build our bank for, you know, for the inclusionary obligation for the future, right, to have a bank for that. So we just wanted to generate the units. And we don't have exactly the same imperative post-redevelopment to just constantly be filling in this bank.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, well, certainly we don't have quite as many requirements, you know, on us as, you know, previously. But, you know, we certainly still, you know, this is, the inclusionary program is certainly part of our toolkit and how we show.
Right, but I guess what I'm getting at is the, is whether or not, because to me, the notion that we would have a more, where the strategy would, rather than, okay, let's generate as many units as we can, as fast as we can, to think about how are we setting ourselves up? Because ideally, we would be producing more affordable housing in the various income categories, roughly coincident with the period in which they're needed for the community. So we don't run into this problem, so that, you know, when we're producing when it's not needed, and so we have to import folks to live there. And then, or, we don't have any when it is needed. But we haven't been able to take that approach in the past because we just needed to generate the units. I guess the question I would have, not for tonight necessarily, but is to, is to get some sense whether that would likely pass muster with HCD, essentially allowing us to use the trust fund not just to deal with the gap financing issues and all of that, but to really think about the trust fund as a, you know, a long-term bank, to be able to make the staged investments in affordable housing in a time that's needed. That makes sense to me, but that doesn't mean that it would pass muster given the guidelines for HCD's review of our housing element. So I'd like to know more about, know more about that. The other question I had is on the site inventory and the map. What isn't on here is, I'm looking at B seven and eight, and so it might be somewhere else, but what I'm not seeing is any references to the Bluffs. So the, which in the last, in the last time we did a housing element, we didn't anticipate any development in the near or more midterm in the Bluffs area. And now with the construction of the bridge and some other things, but the, but the bridge in particular, that we're, you know, we're considering that area for near, mid, and long-term conversion to other uses, including mixed uses that could have, could potentially be on this map, but certainly over the eight-year period. But it's not on here at all, right? It's just Southport and then the Northland Freeway.
Part of the science behind this is trying to show on, for HCD, that this is farland inventory and how we meet our arena needs on trying to, I'll use the, perhaps the inappropriate term, but the lowest-hanging fruit possible to have as many, to not have to, you know, just debate with HCD about, well, will a site turn over over this time? Well, it's got, it's partially developed now. So to the extent we can rely on entitled properties and properties that are otherwise vacant and meet our needs, we moved in that direction. It doesn't, not to say, you know, when we come back, general plan-wise, you know, we will certainly be planning for and allocating a certain amount of development, you know, within the Bluffs area. But we were able to meet our objectives through these other properties, and then so thus, you know, didn't want to try to entertain bringing in any other properties that would need some significant redevelopment, may have some cleanup issues, you know, things like that. So we were able to meet our obligation or show that we have enough land, you know, entitled and vacant, you know, without including any of those properties, you know, this time around.
Yeah, I get it, but I also do think, you know, as we're, as we're making the case, as we're for the tank farms and for other users in that district, to not reflect on an element of our general plan that we actually expect housing to be produced in that, in that district is not optimal. So I understand, although, I mean, I think, I mean, I get the HCD frame of it. It's not accurate. I mean, for me, it's more likely that we will produce housing that's affordable in the Bluffs over the eight-year period than it is just south of, you know, at Sacramento Avenue and Sunset. You know, I mean, these tiny parcels all over the place are less likely, in the real world, to produce any significant numbers of affordable housing compared to what is potentially possible in the Bluffs. So I don't have a specific thing, I just think, I don't, I would prefer not to have maps that are in the general plan, the housing element portion of the general plan, that don't include an expectation that over the next eight years, there's going to be mixed-use development and housing development in that district. Kristoff?
Just a question, how many units do we have in the bank?
I don't know the exact number that we have on hand. I'm going to have to get back to you on that, I'm sorry.
And I guess one of the other things that I see going on within the region, and that is communities of Roseville, the communities of Elk Grove, I mean, not Elk Grove so much, but Folsom. Both of those communities have, they're starting very large projects, housing projects. And it doesn't seem like the development community is really interested in building the condos or the townhouses or apartment complexes and that sort of thing. It seems like they're really focusing on the large, single-family unit. And, you know, as the, as the whole housing market was winding down a couple of years ago, everybody thought that it was going to be, you know, the eight-plex or the four-plex or whatever it was, the small unit that was going to be the next trend. But I notice in these other communities, that's not the case. It is the single-family detached house, the two-thousand-to-three-thousand-square-foot model. It is the single-family detached house, the 2,000 to 3,000 square foot model. And so, you know, if, as you bring back this housing element and all this other things, I'd like to have some of that data, like Mr. Vegas would like to have. You know, what is going on out there in the world? And really, the developers are going to tell us what they want to build. They've all got it figured out. So, they're the ones that'll really dictate and push, but I'd like to, maybe, I'd just like to know ahead of time, what's going out there in the world?
Yeah, I mean, we did just get, just last week at Secog, the updated figures, and the proportion of housing that's being built, attached, small lots, sort of the, what we were talking about, is over 40% in the region, and it's higher than was projected in the blueprint. So, we're actually, we're moving towards this new kind of housing, much, well, not much faster, but faster than it was even anticipated in that document. So, it's slightly outnumbering the number of units that are in the large lot, more traditional large lot, single-family.
And I went by up there at Roseville, I went by Vineyards, I think it's called, and they're just pounding up houses like we were five years ago. And they're selling like crazy.
A lot of the, but the other product, the townhomes, the condos, the small lot developments, the attached units, aren't being built 5,000 at a time, and so, they don't get the same attention. You don't notice them, because it's, you know, half a block here, half a block there, but when you add it all up, it is more production, and it's more, both demand and supply than that traditional format. It's just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not so striking, because they're not bulldozing a whole place and building them, but it is, but it is the preponderance. It's the same thing here, that more of the units that are actually being constructed and purchased are in that, in that format now. But we should, I mean, there is plenty of data out there from a variety of sources for us, for when this comes back. Okay? Any further discussion on this? This is for discussion and presentation only? All right? Thank you. Then we're going to proceed to item 14, which is consideration of the draft 2013 West Sacramento Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're going to be, we're very excited to present to you the 2013 Bike, Ped, and Trails Master Plan project. We're very excited to bring you this project during May as Bike Month, a very exciting time at which we're celebrating our bicycle activities here in the region. I also wanted to introduce to you tonight, our newest staff member, Chris Doherty. He comes to us from the city of Sacramento. He's spent the last nine years, in his career, involved in land use planning and also transportation planning at the city of Roseville and at the city of Sacramento, and at Secog prior to that, and he's an excellent addition to our staff. He'll be working on not only this project and the implementation of the Bike, Ped Master Plan, but also on our parking programs and a number of other innovative programs in our division. So, with that, I'll introduce Chris, who will be going through the plan with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to bring forward tonight the City of West Sacramento 2013 Bike and Pedestrian Trails Master Plan. This plan outlines the city's vision to encourage cyclists and pedestrians of all ages to move through the city through a network of streets designed for all users for the next 20 years. This project was initiated in 2011 with a grant from Caltrans, from the BTA account, and the completion of this plan satisfies a requirement of funding that the city have a current bike plan on file to apply for grant funds. The city contracted with Ferentz Peers in 2011 to finalize this plan. Outreach of this plan consisted of three public meetings, two stakeholder meetings, and an online survey, and there was tremendous feedback from the public. This plan is one of the first in the country to utilize and plan out a low-stress network for a city, and that really, it's really designed to encourage more residents to move in around the city in a safe and comfortable way. The council heard a workshop on the master plan on the 6th, and comments from that meeting, along with comments from Secog and the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, have been folded into the final version of the plan that is for you tonight. Since the workshop, staff has received additional comments and made the following changes to the plan. We reprioritized the proposed projects in Appendix B. Staff added two additional ranking criteria. One is to support older neighborhoods, and the other is to support priority development areas. Several of the proposed projects have either been combined into more comprehensive projects or split into smaller projects for funding opportunities. There was a section of Class 1 Bike Trail that was to be studied further along Fisher Avenue on the southern border of the city, along Shengra La Slu. That has been removed due to some complications with the alignment of that. We will be looking at a future Class 1 Bike Trail facility through the future Yarborough development. And also, as a last change, last-minute change from a member, we have added approximately a 50-foot sidewalk segment on the south side of Linden Road between River City High School and the Clarkspur Branch Line Trail to connect those two. Those will be done further off into the future. We added, excuse me, the following sections to candidate programs, a section on ongoing maintenance, to make sure that we are keeping the bike lanes free of debris in well-traveled areas of the city, and also that we are keeping the bike detection units, or the loop detectors, and the signal timing key to cyclists through current areas as well, and make sure those are functioning at a consistent level. So, that concludes my presentation. Staff respectfully recommends that council approve the proposed Bike Master Plan, and I am available for any question you may have.
Okay. May I approach him, Lidda Asma?
I have no comments right now.
Sidewalk.
I'm sorry?
Do you have a sidewalk?
Well, yeah, I was just looking through something else, but, well, I was, I'll go and ask now, thank you for putting me on the spot. But there was that section you mentioned verbally of Linden, and we are going to include that now, because I know that was...
It is being included in the plan.
Right. So, I thought that was originally on the plan, that intersection, the crossing, the old crossing.
We're in the process of finalizing the design and getting ready to build and pave the Clarkspur Branch Line Trail right adjacent to that.
Right.
So, I was exploring options if we could include that in the plan. There's some right-of-way issues that complicate that, so we just add it in the plan for future study.
Okay. That'd be great, because I noticed, and neighbors have noticed, that that area was not included, but it also, that whole area there, I think it's slated in the plan, is in dire need of attention, because the high school folks, the kids walking to Our Lady of Grace, the kids going to Stone Gate, it becomes a real bottleneck for pedestrians in that area, and it's very dangerous. That intersection in and of itself without pedestrians is dangerous because of vehicles that are going, rolling through the intersections. So, it's just, it just needs attention. There are kids actually walking along the unpaved northern part of Linden, next to Our Lady of Grace, and the cross, and no sidewalk crossing on the, on the trail is problematic as well. So, just, I just want to make sure that got in there. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Before we take further comments, sorry. All right. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. We have a few requests to speak on item 14, so we'll start with Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. And at the last City Council meeting, I believe it was, the argument was given at the end of the meeting, that we should close off that portion of West Capitol Avenue from Fifth Street westward, where it goes under that two-lane underpass, close it off to vehicle traffic. Well, because of the Welcome Grove Trailer Park and Mobile Home Park, and people living there, many of whom do not drive vehicles, I think it should be closed off to eastbound traffic, but left open to westbound traffic, and the speed should be reduced to 10 or 15 miles an hour, and we retain the Bus 40 and 41 going through the underpass, and reduce it to one lane rather than the two lanes, and widen the bike lanes and the pedestrian lanes. And this way, number 40 and 41, coming back, coming eastward back towards town, could use the same route as the other buses and make a left turn onto Tower Bridge Gateway, and then they could turn left back on to Fifth Street from there northward, because right now, they don't make any stops after they make that left turn onto West Capitol Avenue and go underneath the two-lane bridge anyway. But I think it would be important to maintain 40 and 41 being able to go by Welcome Grove Trailer Park, but again, reduce that speed to 10 or 15 miles an hour, and it would also continue to make it more convenient for people who work at railies as well. But this would slow down the traffic, and I think it achieves the goal that was intended. So, again, let's consider allowing slower one-way traffic going west, and it will also help the fire department, police department, and other emergency vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Mark Paulhemus?
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I'm Mark Paulhemus from WAC Sacramento, and I am working with the city and the school district on the Safe Routes to School program here, have been for the last year, and will continue throughout the next year. And I'm here to comment to support the adoption of this plan, specifically for its comprehensive approach to supporting active transportation in, within West Sacramento, and getting to and from West Sacramento, from Sacramento and Davis, and its approach to increasing safety for pedestrians, for bicyclists, and to improve access to transit. Also, it highlights the need for low-stress pedestrian and bicycle facilities in order to encourage more of this type of, of this transportation. And also, as serving a part of the technical advisory committee in the stakeholder meetings, the city has been very accepting of any recommendations or any comments that WAC Sacramento has made toward the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. A.J. Tendak?
Mayor, Council members. Excuse me. I have the pleasure of being a WesAC resident, a future new business owner, local business owner, as well as the Regional Bike Month project manager, so I was...
Did you miss something about Housing Commission?
I'm sorry?
Aren't you a commissioner?
Oh, and Housing Advisory Commissioner, which isn't quite as relevant towards, to bike facilities. You know, and across all three of those things, I'm thrilled that the city's gone through the effort to really get updated and get a plan now that can seek future funding. As, you know, a future local business owner, thrilled to see there's a connection now of a gap that was right in front of my future new business. And as a resident, of course, as a primary bicyclist, I certainly appreciate the new connections. As staff member Doherty mentioned, the low-stress analysis, not only being new, but it's certainly, you know, from Bike Month perspective, really what I do is encouragement. It's all about marketing and less about building bike lanes, although I certainly like to see that. The low-stress stuff really does get critical with getting folks. I'm in that, I think it was the 7% of the crazy guys that ride just about anywhere, but you really see the bulk of the folks. You know, even, I think Jefferson has a great facility, it's got a huge bike lane, but really, you know, you look at the analysis and the plan, and folks really aren't that comfortable with this. You look at those alternatives, the parallels, the new bridge, that sort of thing, so I think that's fantastic. One critique that I might have as a new parent that has been doing an exorbitant amount of walking recently, unfortunately, with a non-sleeping baby, it really highlights the gaps, at least in my neighborhood, of the Metro Place, Washington Square, wherever that is, over by the High Street Bridge there, that it's incredibly difficult to get to just the riverfront there. You know, it's not really all that safe. You cross an unprotected or unsidewalked area, across the train tracks there, and there's a couple of gaps. There's a gap at Fifth and A that there's just 20 feet, where there's just not a sidewalk where it connects where it should. So, I'm happy to provide comments later through the city staff on identifying some of those gaps as rehab funding. Again, thank you. I support this, and I hope the council makes part of it.
Thank you. Jim Brown?
Mr. Mayor, Council members, my name is Jim Brown. I'm the Executive Director of Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, and I am pleased to be here this evening to speak on behalf of the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan. First of all, congratulations for hiring Chris Doherty. He was a, he was a very valuable board member for SABA for several years, and we're sorry to see him go, and we're happy to see where he landed. So, with that, I think, just want to echo some of the comments others have made, this plan is a great precedent for the whole region, especially the focus on the network of low-stress bikeways. There's a huge pent-up demand for bicycling out there. There are a lot of people who want to ride bicycles. They're ready to do it, they've got a bicycle, but they don't feel comfortable sharing the road with other traffic. And as much as we'd like to be able to teach them how to get comfortable with traffic, that's probably not going to achieve the kind of mode shift that we're eager to see. So, it's especially important to look at, what are the stressors that are keeping people from riding? And this is, this is the first plan in the region that does that. It's really terrific to see WesAC taking this lead. Where I work and live over on the other side of the river, we have been going a little more slowly in this direction, and so, I'm glad to see the pressure coming from across the river, because it's going to make a huge difference for our work over there. I have a couple of very brief comments about the plan, and I'll submit these in writing to staff, but I just wanted to call them to your attention. First of all, when you, when your report talks about establishing this network of low-stress bikeways, we had initially recommended that you specify that the bikeways should reach between, within a half a mile of 90% of the city's residents, and I would just encourage you to consider naming a specific distance that would guide you in deciding exactly where to put this. Otherwise, you're in the risk of saying that you've created a network, but that one that doesn't actually connect everything that needs to be connected. Your goal about doubling the mileage of bikeways is terrific. I would encourage you to look at a timetable for that. I did not see a timetable in there. I may have overlooked it, but if it's not in there, it's worth, it's worth setting some goals for yourself. In the section around bicycle boulevards, you might find it helpful to describe what features you would install on some of those streets to keep vehicle traffic low, so that you can use them as bicycle boulevards. Bicycle boulevards are a specific type of facility in my world, and they tend to involve certain types of traffic calming features, so it would be valuable to specify that. I think that's about all I need to say on this. I appreciate your efforts on this, and I look forward to seeing it implemented.
All right. Thank you. All right, those are all the comments that we have on item 14. So, Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first of all, I wanted to say, first of all, welcome to West Sacramento. The plan itself, I think, reflects some of the, some of the comments, suggestions that have surfaced over the course of the last 12 months. I was also happy to see that the prioritization, I guess, if you will, the scoring reflected a good diverse projects throughout the city, spread out, and I know that some of the Class III striping that needs to take place on Lisbon and Anna and Todd Hunter, pretty inexpensive, but the value added is tremendous, and so, I'm certainly keeping an eye on figuring out a way to make sure that it's... easier for folks to get around. And some of the streets that didn't have the advantage of building in the width that we would love for bike paths, but yet we know that the propensity for folks to ride their bikes is very high on some of these streets. So along that line, I would love to figure out a way to, to partner with Mr. Brown to figure out what creative ways have communities used to educate drivers of vehicles to, to make sure that they're, quote, "sharing the road." I know that in some communities, they've been pretty aggressive in making sure that signage or other ways to alert the drivers that, you know, there's a huge penalty if you're not sharing the road in the appropriate way. And I would love to figure out a way to be creative as we implement some of these very easily, very, very, very inexpensive changes to striping, but if there isn't that education or that sort of awareness by the driver, it doesn't make it any safer. And I think we've all alluded to that this evening, that despite the fact that they're there, people aren't going to use them because they just don't feel safe. And I know I've seen some creative signs that I think as a driver, I'm, when you start putting, and I'm not saying doing it this way, but putting the fact that it's a law and that there's penalties and what those penalties are certainly gets my attention. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the solutions are, but I would encourage us to continue to go down that path because these solutions are pretty inexpensive. The, the idea of the Safe Routes to School, I know that the city's School Two by Two has been working on that. There's some, some opportunities to partner for some funding there as well. The maintenance is a big deal. I know that you mentioned that earlier and I, I want to make sure we don't lose track of that. I know that as, as much as work as we're going to be doing and putting these, these, these connectors together and the paths together, if they're not well-maintained, I know myself, when I used to commute quite a bit, they weren't maintained at all and it was just a nightmare to try to weave through and around a lot of the glass and traffic, I mean, glass and rocks that are littering the, the lanes themselves. And then the last thing I would, I would, I would throw out, and I think it bears repeating, and that is because you have it in here, and I always thought about this, and it actually mentions as part of the candidate programs, and that is recreational events or some way to sort of promote the, the connectivity, because I think folks are not as likely to use bike lanes or bike paths if they don't know what that route looks like. But if we can somehow introduce people to the fact that they're, they're there, that they're clean, that they're safe, whether we do, you know, public outreach or whether we do community events or whether we do, you know, events where we all try to keep up with the mayor riding around town to show that these paths actually do connect and you can get from A to B to Z because that's in our general plan to be able to make sure that we connect neighborhoods. I think we showcase them, so when we're doing them, as we're doing them, we're showcasing them from one end of town to the other. I think that'll certainly give some of the, 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 the work some traction in the community. So otherwise, it looks like it's, it's coming together very nicely.
Yeah, the, I, I, a few comments on, I think this is, some of which might sound a little heretical because I think this is a, for me, this is a transitional plan. It's a very, a very big step forward in terms of our Bike Master Plan and pedestrian trails as well, and for some of the reasons that have been described already. And I think it helps, it's getting to where we need to be, but I don't think we're there, I don't think we're there yet. In part, because we're still, we still use a lot of the frameworks around biking in particular, but it's true for walking too, that tend to envision it in a couple of ways that I think are not necessarily always helpful or accurate. One is it's heavily around safety, 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 as though biking and walking are, are horribly dangerous activities. And so, you know, if we could just make it a little, we could just make it safe, then people would do it. We don't approach our road stuff that way. You know, none of our, none of our road plans are, are from that perspective, even though driving is more dangerous than either biking or walking. And so while we, while we, we need to continue to make it safer and safer and safer, I think sometimes our obsession with that, that language and that framework about thinking about it is counterproductive because all we do is reinforce the, the fear that there's something nefariously unsafe about these two ways of getting around compared to driving. And it just isn't the case. And so, you know, thinking about safety as one element of the, of the broader set of objectives is important. The one where I think most people will not agree with me, but I, you know, we've got time to fight this out over the next couple of years, is I also think we're overly obsessed with connection. That the idea that we want to connect this neighborhood to that thing or that place to that place is important, but it is no longer, to me, the exclusive goal, well, inclusive along with safety. We have created, and I, and I think you capture this with the priority development area concept in the community benefit analysis, as, at least embryonically, but we're creating places in the city that depend on walking and biking, right? It's not that we would like to encourage it because it's good for clean air and for obesity and all of that. It is all those things. But the Bridge District and West Capitol Avenue Corridor and the Washington Square area are specifically built without the parking and the street widths and everything else that we can't, if we only achieve five percent mode share, that we're screwed, right? So those places, for, for our own economic development and land use plans, those places have to be all-in for biking, walking, and for transit. You don't achieve that by thinking them of as a connection from the Bridge District to other places. The whole Bridge District has to be a bike and pedestrian web, right? And, and that's not how we've traditionally thought about the Bike Master Plans. Not, and I don't just mean us, anybody. I mean, even at Seco, we've had this, this debate about, you know, whether we put a lot of money into, you know, bike, bike facilities that are great for the recreationalists and for bike commuters, but there's a whole other world, which is we're creating places where, where we're saying you ought to be able to live without a car if you choose to, but that means that the whole area has to be a web of bike facilities, lanes and paths and, and others. And so just having one, you know, if the Bridge District has the one path, okay, that's taken care of, now let's go on to another neighborhood, it doesn't, it doesn't work. And so differentiating these places that we're creating in the city that are all about biking, walking, and transit is the principal modes of moving around, to me, is really critical moving forward. And I think we, we're starting that with the Priority Development Area Concept, but we need to, we need to continue to move in that direction and I'm certainly pushing at the region as well, that moving towards connecting our land use and economic development strategy to our biking and walking strategy as opposed to thinking as biking and walking is something that you do for fun and it's cute and all of that, which it is. It's all of those things, but it is also central to, to the, to the rest of our strategies which will fall apart if we don't do it. And it's one reason why I'm resistant to the ninety percent concept is that it's not, that, that sort of treats the whole city the same. And fundamentally, it isn't, right? Creating a suburb-to-suburb connection has a particular set of, of outcomes and benefits and needs, but it doesn't, if we don't do it, it, it doesn't destroy our ability for the, for the, for Yarborough to get built, that, you know, the next subdivision in Southport does not depend on it. Whereas the Bridge District does, you know, literally depend on us delivering streetcar, biking, and walking in a, in a very robust way that covers the whole area. And so we need a, the plan has to focus on, on place, on enabling that in addition to point-to-point connections between, between places throughout the, throughout the city. So I think we're, we're getting there, but that's, that's where both we and the region have to start working in there. And at Seco, I think we are also moving in the direction of trying to incorporate our placemaking goals in addition to our carbon reduction and healthy exercise goals into, into the regional plan as well. And, and our, and our public input needs to be taken in that, in that vein, that it's not a random sample of either current bicyclists and walkers, nor is it a sample of those who could be biking and walking. And it's a reason why even though the vast major, the vast majority of bike accidents occur north of, north of the freeway, but the vast majority of people participating in the input sessions and online and everything else have been from folks south of the freeway. And so it, it changes the distribution of how we think about where we need to make investments. It's not just about outreach, although it's partly that, but I mean, just the, you know, folks who are, we see riding, you know, I, I mean, there's lots and lots of people riding on West Capitol Avenue, most of whom are not, you know, are not really engaged in, in, yes, and mostly in the wrong direction. Which brings me to my next point, which is I totally agree on driving or education. If we do the low-stress network, it really puts an exclamation point behind the notion that we have to be aggressive on biker, bicyclist education and hardcore enforcement. Because driving on Jefferson, at least as a, biking on Jefferson, it's very clear for the entire journey that you are in an environment with others, both other cyclists, but also cars and pedestrians. When we create these low-stress networks that go through neighborhoods and all of that, I worry very much that, that, that the cognitive reminder that you are sharing the space as a cyclist with others goes away. And so that the, I was, I was going to say the tendency, but it's near, near universal, the behavior of cyclists to ignore stop signs entirely and to pay very little attention to stoplights will be highly exacerbated in a low-stress network. And that, that is dangerous both for them, but for pedestrians as well and for other cyclists and for motorists in the neighborhoods who expect and deserve to be able to walk safely in their own neighborhoods. And if we are encouraging cyclists to go through them, we need to make sure that cyclists are following the traffic laws and that is an extraordinarily difficult outcome to achieve. And so if we can't, we need to, we need to be prepared to change course on the low-stress network. So I, I think we, you know, we, we ought to try this, but with very clear eyes about what, you know, what, about how we're going to assess whether it's working or not, and to also be assured that we're really paying attention to this, to this, you know, problem of bicyclist compliance when there aren't cognitive reminders in the environment that, yeah, you need to be, you need to stop because there might be, there might be a little girl on her tricycle on the sidewalk coming perpendicular in the intersection that you're not, you're not going to see and that you won't in the, in the, in the, in the slow-stress network. So I think that's, that's an important sort of metric as we, as we move forward with the approach, which I think makes sense, but I think we need to pay attention to that. We also need to make sure people actually use that. I mean, the, it's, we, we, I mean, there definitely is, for the segment of riders that includes Mr. Tendak, but also plenty of others, people want to go from point A to point B, you know, they're going to take the route that is the most, is the fastest and the most obvious. And so we, we, we do want to make those rate, those, those routes, you know, we want to pay attention to them because people will use them. In the same way that we created this fantasy here on West Capitol Avenue a decade ago when the, you know, the bike route at, is it Westacre, it turns right? You're supposed to, you're, as you're coming down West Capitol Avenue, you're supposed to turn right on Westacre, turn left on Merkley, turn back on to, back on to Jefferson or Merkley, again, back on to West Capitol Avenue because we have declared that that's the route? No, not a single person has ever done that. It's ridiculous. And so, so as we create a low-stress network, it's great if it's, but it's only great if people actually, if we, if it's so good that people choose that over the other, the other route. If it just sort of becomes a recreational corridor for people who don't care about the use of their time while, while others are on the, are on the main one and we've shifted our investments all to the low-stress network, then it, then that's a problem. So we need to be monitoring the, as we implement this, how that is actually going to work. And then I do want to just emphasize the, the sweeping and the maintenance issues. It is, it is a, it is a problem. I think often the street sweepers don't, and frankly, our, many of our other departments, police, police and fire who love to park in the bike lanes because it's clear, but it's a real, it's a problem when you're, when you're directing drivers there. And then the street sweepers who just sweep the, all the garbage into the bike lane. It, it, I mean, it's both annoying, but it also is, it creates a real problem because motorists see the bike lane and therefore, you know, assume that they, they don't have to pay attention to the bicyclists because they will be in the bike lane. But bicyclists see the rocks and the glass or the police car and so have to get out of the bike lane when motorists are no longer paying attention. So it's all, it's more unsafe than if you had had no bike lane in the first place. And so there are other departments of the city beyond those that are, that are, you know, building stuff. The, the maintenance, the maintenance crews and other departments need to be, you know, fully on board in terms of making this stuff work, both that it is, doesn't fall apart, but also that it actually works for cyclists. My last piece is on bike parking. Can we do something about Southport Town Center? I mean, I think this, this is a good start, but, 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 you know, just to put, put an emphasis on this, on this component, we didn't get that right there. And, and I, I think, I mean, parking Southport Town Center has been so successful as a community hub in Southport, but ma, but really making sure that we are creating adequate, adequate parking for, for bikes. And I think this, this policy is a good, is a good start for the larger projects, but, but we, but we do need to assure that that, that that is, that that's occurring. So, a couple of comments. But, but on, on a whole, I think this, this does, this represents a significant step, step forward and I, and I do think the regional plan and the, and the priorities and the criteria for how the regional allocation of bike and pedestrian dollars are, are going to flow more in the direction of the kinds of things that are both in the plan and the issues that I just raised, to try to, to try to direct more of those resources to the exact of this sort of thing. So good work and I think we're in the right tracks.
No, I was just going to say, just, just for some clarification, there will be auto traffic in, up on the bluff, and there will be auto traffic that goes from the hotel through the district. And it's not going to be just all bicyclists, pedestrians, and, and.
Horses.
Well, whatever, you know? And it's, so anyway, but I was just wanting to, some of the folks might have thought from your comments that that's what it was going to be in, in that triangle area, but anyway, it's not. It's, they're all, you'll be able to take your car through there.
Oh, yeah. And there'll be a lot of cars, which is why, why getting this right. But there'll also be simultaneously a lot of people, if we've done this right, who, who will either not have a car or won't be using it most of the time. And so we've got to, we wouldn't, if there were no cars at all, we wouldn't need to worry about this at all. But there will be both a lot of cars and a lot of folks walking and biking and waiting for the bus and the streetcar. Mayor Perdomo DeSoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allow me, some additional comments, and I just wanted to say thank you for the plan. It is comprehensive. It addresses a lot of things that I've heard my bicyclist friends talk about that we need, we need. And, and to me, that's exciting that we have this burgeoning bicycle community that's, that I have friends, I see them on Facebook, I see them riding bikes and doing these things and that we can create a neighborhood, and neighborhoods that, that not just accommodate them, but encourage them to make it safe, to, to make it our city kind of leading the way in how bicycle traffic and, and, and cars and pedestrians all interact. To me, this is exciting and, and maybe it is a transitional point, but we have to start somewhere and I, and I totally like the direction it's going. The one part I wanted to address, just, just from an overall policy perspective, because I, I think the bicycle part of the, of the plan is well, well laid out. And I don't want to say I'm disappointed, that's not the right word, but the pedestrian side is, you know, it, it, it is lesser of the plan. And we addressed, as the mayor pointed out, a lot of it's around crosswalk safety, around where we need to improve gaps. As Mr. Tendak pointed out, there are gaps. And I think, I think there is a community that maybe didn't come out as eagerly or as, as vocally as what's needed to make this a more walkable neighborhood. So I think as we move forward, we, we really need to think about that. And because bicyclists are, as a mode of transportation, they're going somewhere or they're recreationally biking, and, and they are probably more in the sphere of automobile interaction than maybe a pedestrian would, there's that element. But I, I want to kind of think of, have us think about how, I think the mayor started to allude to this, on how we can use the other parts of our city policies. Because it, this talks about the interaction it has with the general plan and, and interaction it has with the Southport Framework Plan and the Washington Specific Plan about what we require from the development that we plan in the future and to build out. And I know from my experience in the planning commission, the Southport Framework Plan, and Charlene probably remembers this too, it was brought up, was the Southport Town Center. And I remember fighting very hard when the target went in that we needed more, more pedestrian-friendly amenities there. We wanted bike racks. We wanted, I think there actually is a gateway to the trail there, a trellis, because I said, we have to connect, there's this beautiful Carlsberg, and I remember saying that. And they put one there, but there's still no, it's, it's between a parking lot. And, and so my point is, is that how do we translate what we have here? Because on page, I'm sorry, on page sixty-five of the plan, you know, we have these location-specific recommendations and at the bottom of the page, at minimum, the city shall require new development to complete sidewalk gaps. But my point is, is that what do we, how do we translate to creating these places that are not just pedestrian-friendly or bicycle-friendly, but encouraging? I think Southport Town Plaza, in retrospect, we, I don't want to say we got it wrong, we did it, what we had to do at the time, but we could, it could have been better. I think we all acknowledge that. I'll look at the property to the north of that, across from Lake Washington. And I remember that we had, at the planning commission, we had, I'm sorry, Charlene, you were there, but we had a discussion about that potential triangle of the Pheasant Club and the Southport Town Center, and then the restaurant that we first saw on the, on the northern, northeast corner of that intersection. And then we had Westbridge Plaza on the northwest part of that intersection and how that could generate pedestrian traffic, which it does today. And we put a sidewalk on the corner so people that wanted to maybe get across the street from the Pheasant Club going. from the Pheasant Club going north, they could walk over, not walk into the parking lot, but they had a walkway to get into the plaza. And if you take the exact opposite down to Southport Plaza at Linden and Jefferson, you'll see people walking from the neighborhoods who walk through the grass and the landscaping to get to the round table or the eatery. That's just an example of what I mean, is how do we translate this plan into those types of specific plans to make that development happen? Because I think we can put the crosswalks in, it makes it all safe. We do that, but that's what's going to get people to walk and be safe. And Mr. Tendek with his baby and child walking, make it easier to get their stroller across. And that will encourage bicyclists and pedestrians. So I don't know how we do this from this plan, but I'd like to see that kind of going forward. Because I think in the end, developments percolating back, businesses are starting to invest in their properties, now's the time that we get these rules in place and get those intentions out there as they start to build. The Bridge District will be a phenomenal experiment for us because we're going to get a lot of pressure to build these things, and we need to hold fast and true to these principles that we want bike racks, that we want, I'm sorry that you plan to have a driveway there, but we need a pedestrian crossing because people will be crossing there. Those are the kind of things that we need to articulate in these other parts of the plan. So if I had a critique or constructive critique out of this, is to be able to emphasize the need to push those policies into these other documents. Because without it, then it's just a one-dimensional plan, and we're not capturing it at the other level. So that's my comment. This is a very good plan. I don't want to diminish your work and the work you've done on this, because the outreach on this was phenomenal, and the community got behind it, and I think it's a great step forward. So I just want to commend you on that. I just want to get those comments across.
I think the other thing for pedestrians is this whole issue of bikers. I mean, cyclists think of themselves as doing God's work by saving the environment, whatever. But for pedestrians, errant cyclists are a problem, right? And so dealing with the enforcement issues with cyclists, the wrong-way cycling, the sidewalk cycling in the Central Business District, where we have installed the best bike lanes imaginable, I mean, we got to enforce. We've created this environment, and we need to hold bicyclists accountable for that as well, so that the pedestrian environment can be safe, in addition to cyclists' own safety. But the pedestrians should have an expectation that they can use the sidewalk while the cyclists are in the bike lane that has been provided, and they're riding in the right direction. So I mean, all the plan and all that, I think what some don't realize in the community, and much less in the regions, how much of a center of cycling we've already become, that West Sacramento is, I mean, what you see, what Mayor Protemla Desma has sort of described anecdotally in the community is worn out by the statistics. And even looking at May's bike months, city-by-city statistics, which they do this time around, it's clear in the region, there's a cluster of four cities where the use of cycling for commuting, for errands, for work trips is dramatically higher than everywhere else. And that's Davis, Sacramento, us, and maybe Roseville. That's it. But I mean, those four, and then there's a big gap to the next set. So it's already happening here in large measures, sort of despite the fact that we didn't, and we have made a lot of progress in facilities. We've added a huge number of bike lanes and facilities from that very first start on West Capitol Avenue. I mean, a huge amount of investment has been made, but it really is taking off as a means of actual getting around. In addition to the recreational cycling, it's really, it's taking hold in ways that I think even most of us in the community haven't recognized the change, but it is certainly occurring. And this plan, I think, has a lot of promise for accelerating that even further. All right, so the plan is before us. There's no further comments? Is there a motion? Then moved by Mr. Villegas.
Seconded by Mayor Protemla Desma.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turned down, the motion carries. All right, council calendar. Mr. Tuttle?
Mayor and council members, Carol Richardson's on vacation, so this is my task today. On your May council calendar, there are a couple corrections. Tomorrow's redevelopment successor agency oversight board meeting has been canceled. We have a meeting with Senator Steinberg and Bike to Work Day on May 17th, which is not on the calendar. The Yolo Leaders Forum, May 22nd, it's 4:00 to 6:00. It is in winters, and it's not in woodland. It's at the Palms Playhouse from 4:00 to 6:00 in winters. And any questions on the calendar, I'm happy to answer.
Any question on the calendar?
No, I would just say that on the 16th, we have the state of the city.
Yeah, I don't know why the city manager didn't mention that.
That was correctly listed on the calendar. Otherwise, I would have.
And at next week's council meeting on the 15th, both the Mayor Protemla and I will be absent, and Mr. Kristof will be designated as the presiding officer of that council meeting. All right, city manager reports.
Last night, Congress took on the flood control legislation. We were hoping to have a summary available today from Hall and Knight. There were several amendments to that bill. It will be voted on next week, so as soon as we get that summary, we'll provide it to you.
Thank you.
The other item, we mentioned it in the council newsletter, with staff, Mike Lucan, City of Sacramento, Caltrans, announced last Friday that the I Street Bridge replacement project is fully programmed. In the current year, $2 million for environmental, another $9 million in fiscal year '15, '16. We're working with Caltrans in terms of the local match requirement, and we'll work with SAICOG on using toll credits in lieu of the local match. So that's a tremendous effort. It's fully funding $86.6 million for that project. And as we get additional details, we'll obviously forward it on to you.
Okay. City attorney report?
Actually, did want to mention one thing. Yesterday, the California Supreme Court announced its decision in the City of Riverside case, which was very favorable for local control of land use decision-making, upheld the City of Riverside's ban on medical marijuana dispensaries. And there's a lot of language in it, which I think is very helpful generally for implementing medical marijuana protection, the various statutes that we're dealing with, and in the context of how local cities can control their own land use decisions. So we had promised you that we'd be back before or around November, sometime in that timeframe, to reengage on the issue of cultivation, which we still need to look at. We're still looking through the decision and seeing how it affects cultivation issue, but it clearly supports the city's ability to ban dispensaries or to regulate them, if that was the decision you wanted to go.
Good news.
Yeah. I mean, I actually think the cultivation piece was pretty clearly implied in the decision, not in terms of its discussion of land use, but it's pulling back of what the meaning of the initiative was in the first place, in terms of that, its discussion of that topic seemed pretty clear. I mean, you have to be more conservative.
No, I agree. The court was very clear that these were not broad, sweeping legalizations of marijuana, that they were incremental steps and should be read narrowly to conform to exactly what they were, which is what we have said all along. They are, they were statutes that were intended to prohibit folks from being prosecuted criminally for certain types of activity related to use of medical marijuana.
Okay. All right, staff directors, members of the council. Mr. Villegas?
Just to mention, we have a news release in front of us. Is that something you were going to mention tonight, or is that for tomorrow?
Okay, got it. All right, and we have no future agenda item requests. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Then moved by Mayor Protemla Desma, seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turned down, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.[1137.41]